A meeting of the Waco City Council on June 18th, 2024 to order at 3:00 PM. Please join me for a moment of silence. Thank you for that. We will now, at this point, provide an opportunity for the public to address the City Council on any agenda item during the hearing of visitors portion of this agenda. On items other than public hearings, speakers will be allotted one three-minute presentation, regardless of the number of agenda items the speaker wishes to address. If you're here to speak and not filled out a registration card, please see the city secretary's staff at the registration table outside of the auditorium and provide registration information so that staff can contact you if necessary. If you have handouts, please let us know at the beginning of the presentation, and staff will distribute those to the council. If you're unable to approach the podium due to physical limitations, a microphone is available to be brought to you. We do have one card here today from Ms. Boone, Jeanne Boone. There you are, Ms. Boone, great. When called to the podium, please state your name and address for the record. Each speaker must limit comments to three minutes. If you're speaking on behalf of a group of ten or more individuals, please have those persons stand at the beginning of your comments. You'll be given 10 minutes to address the council. Please note that if you stand in support of a person getting 10 minutes to speak, you're forfeiting your right to speak on that item. For any person addressing the council through the use of a translator, the speaking time will be doubled to accommodate the translation services. While public discourse is very important to the council, we have to maintain order in the meeting so that all persons may be heard and city business may be conducted. So if directed by me, the sergeant-at-arms shall remove the council, from the council meeting, any person who, while addressing the city council or while attending the city council meeting, makes personal or impertinent or slanders remarks, becomes boisterous, or makes unauthorized remarks from the audience, claps hands, stomps feet, whistles yells, or makes similar demonstrations. So we will now hear from Ms. Boone. I'm sorry, what happened to you? There you are. I had to read all that disclaimer before you got up here, Jeanne, sorry, sorry.
Good afternoon, council and chamber. I am E. Jeanne Boone. I'm a longtime resident of Waco. I reside at 209 Faulkner Lane in the River Oaks subdivision. And I was here at the last council session, business session, and I did not get a chance to complete all I needed to say in those three minutes. And I assured you I would return. And I'm here today to remind you that swimming is one of the real pleasures of summertime for young people during this time. We've just finished celebrating Juneteenth, and we're fast approaching July the 4th. And young people in our community do not have a public pool that they can swim in. And I reminded you all the last time that a splash pad is certainly not a pool that they, a place or site that they can learn how to swim. It's only just to kind of refresh them. And we need a public pool in this area. I am glad to see that it is on the work session agenda tonight, item six, the inform report on update of the Doris Miller Pool. Because last, when I met the business session, the last time, the assistant city manager, Blackman, said that she would contact me or the Parks Recreation Jonathan would get in touch with me, but I didn't hear from them. So I wanted to make sure to come back and remind you all. Some of the projects that you had funded before as a council, and they were the $3 million or you assisted, well, partnered in some of these projects, so $3 million for Lounge Park, $8 million for the Challenger Little League and Lake Air Park. You're getting ready to spend almost $22 million, or was it $120 million for the floor case parkway? And of course, we had the wonderfully Eclipse project that everyone enjoyed, even myself. And we have ongoing projects that are going on in the Brazos River Development. And as a community resident, parent, grandparent, and advocate for residents and parents in my community and taxpayers in my community, we want to see a public pool in our community for our kids because we know that black children are drowning, brown children are drowning, Native American children, all children are drowning, even white kids. There was a young man in China Springs, I think, recently drowned in the river. And we don't need to see that. These kids need to learn, need to learn how to swim. And they can only do it safely. And they cannot travel across town, a lot of them, to the Waco Y on Sanger. They don't have the transportation nor the monies sometimes. So we need a public pool to be open. And the last I heard was November, so that's not acceptable. We need to get this done. And as a city, we are taxpayers, and you all need to make this happen. You're spending funds elsewhere, and we need to see something done about it for our community as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Boone. Appreciate you. We will now, are there any other speakers out there? There being none, we'll now move, we'll recess the regular session and reconvene or convene the work session with a report from the city manager. City Manager Ford, take it away.
Good afternoon. We have no changes to the agenda today. I do want to note, though, that Resolution 479 will require special motion language. It's distributed at each of your places, so we'll be pulling that item from the consent agenda for a separate vote using that language. And I want to spend a few minutes recognizing some of our amazing employees for the work that's going on. First, marketing and communications, I don't know who all we have here from comms, but I see Monica back there. Who else do we have from comms? Well, we're going to record this, but the comms team is going to record this meeting and watch it. And, but they have just, they've been recognized just recently and honored for their outstanding work with six TELI awards. TELI is, you know, normally when you give awards, it's government-only, but the TELI awards is actually all different industries of marketing. So our government employees went up against 12,000 entries from six continents, all 50 states, and came back a winner in six different respected categories. And I just wanted to note how proud I am of their work. It is first-rate quality work, and we have a lot to be proud of in our comms group. So want to give them a round of applause.
City Manager Ford, if I could, request an IR in the future on the two videos that beat the Make It Purple video in its category, because it took home third, and I am just blown away that there are two videos that were better than that one, so.
Yeah, there's no way.
Yeah. I don't actually want that on an IR, but I am very curious to know what kind of qualities being put out that topped that twice.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
The other thing is, as we approach the Texas Municipal League Annual Conference, there are many categories that I do believe we would blow out of said water. And so I anticipate seeing, I have recused myself from being a judge, because I sit on membership committee, just so no one can say it was me, when everybody is awed by Waco's work. You all have done and continue to do a great job, and I look forward to celebrating you in Houston in October.
I'll just echo my fellow council members on that. It's well-deserved, and there's many, a night when I'm surfing through channels that I'll end up on the Waco City cable channel, because that's, got the most interesting stuff. The PSAs are interesting, the programming is interesting, you get to learn about the history of Waco. And you guys do a fantastic job of keeping it fresh, keeping it fun, keeping it funny. And it's a good channel, so I appreciate it.
You did a great job. Thanks, council, for those comments. Next, I'd like to recognize Assistant Finance Director Rusty Hill. He's on the right side of the room, fourth row. This year Rusty was, has received a pretty outstanding honor. Only 32 people in local government finance in the whole country received this honor this year, and it's for the Government Finance Officers Association Outstanding Public Service Award. Rusty, this award, you know, honors people that have been dedicated to the profession, stand out in the profession, and serve their community well. And I just want to tell the world that, you know, Rusty leads a finance team quietly, but with a steady hand, and he's done it here in Waco for a long time. And I'm just real proud of his work. He's had a hard year, certainly, but it's really nice to see him be recognized in such a time as this. So Rusty, thank you very much for your work.
Yeah, Rusty, thanks so much for your work on the finance team, and well-deserved recognition. Appreciate you.
Next up, we've got Ryan Sweat in the audience, back there in the back trying to hide out. Yep. Ryan Sweat's our Senior Information Technology Analyst, and Felicia Taylor is also back. Give us a wave, Felicia. HR recruiter. Both of these individuals were selected from our workforce of about 1,800 to attend the Emerging Leaders Academy earlier this month and graduated. Oh, yeah, we've got the images up there.
Yeah.
This is a four-month program that we put our emerging leaders through. It's through the University of Kansas. We send them up, get them trained up, and then look at them grow down the road. So very proud of each of them for representing Waco well, and I look forward to their careers growing here at the city.
And thanks so much, and everybody here, thank you so much for that. Emerging leaders, you already are leaders here in the city of Waco, and I appreciate it. And on the previous slide, also the purple rain deal, right? So it's like, it's all coming together. It's Ryan Sweat day.
Yeah, that's the problem when you start volunteering for things. Voluntold. Well done, well done. Well, you did a great job. And last, I have a recognition, but I don't see him in the room. I'm still going to read it. He's saying no? Okay. Well, he's a shy guy.
That's exactly the way to describe him.
But we've got a gentleman that's coming up on his retirement later this month after 44 years. And it's Frank Ginch. Frank has served in the police department for 44 years, has been through two near-death experiences. He has fragments of bullets that are as old as me still in his body from serving the Waco community. And he's going to retire officially at the end of this month. And I know he's not here, but I still wanted to recognize him. He is such a great leader. We're having a party for him next week. Look forward to sending him off well. And I'm just thankful, he started as a cadet in 1980. He served as interim chief twice, and then he served as our assistant chief since 2008. So he's been a steadfast leader in this city for quite a long time. And he's done it with such honor and a sense of humor that makes him so approachable. So it makes me think about who I want to be when I grow up, Frank Ginch. So let's give him a round of applause, and y'all join us next week. All right. IRs today, we have five of them. We loaded you up with IR 446 on the Performing Arts Center Philanthropic Analysis Report. That was a report that you commissioned and was supported through Creative Waco as well. We have IR 447, which is an update on our strategic housing plan. This is the second IR we've done as an update to that plan that was adopted a couple of years ago. We'll continue to report out on this on a regular basis so council can keep tabs on how things are going. IR 448 provided an update on the house at 1046 Chestnut. This staff compiled a pretty thorough report and timeline of actions relative to the property, which has been subject to multiple hearing of visitors over the last couple of years.
Mr. City Manager?
Yes, ma'am.
I do have one question, and it is of the legal nature, so I'm going to turn to my trusty city attorney and ask a question. What is it legally that you need a certificate of occupancy to do?
So different cities use it differently.
In these Waco streets?
Right. In Waco, you get a certificate of occupancy when you, and I'm going to look at Laura to make sure I'm saying it right, so Laura, please feel free, jump up if I say it wrong, okay? In Waco, you get it after construction. And so it's the ability to occupy the structure after construction.
So once you have entered the building, do you need it again?
I'm pausing because there are processes for revoking certificates of occupancy, but said a different, let me answer that a different way, if I may, council member. If I buy Bradley's house, I don't need to get a new certificate of occupancy?
You just get an appraise, have the house appraised?
Exactly. That's what home inspections are for.
Inspections, that's what I meant.
Yes, yes.
Okay. So that brings some clarity to me. So nothing, if you didn't have a physical copy of this, it wouldn't hinder you from doing any of the things that you would need to do for a house? Take a loan out against it, I mean, equity, any of those things?
That's correct. And in my personal experience, and I can't speak for every lending situation, but I don't remember having bought two houses ever being asked for a copy of the CO for the house.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions on the informal reports? You have one more, right?
We have two more. We had 449, which is the TMRS cost of living adjustment. We had a group of retirees at the last meeting, and we thought it was wise to provide the council a public update on the cost of living we did last year, as well as the other options that the council and staff had available to us and their cost implications. And then lastly, we had IR 450, which the resident a few moments ago referenced relative to the Doris Miller Indoor Pool Project. Short story, we've got some work to go, but we're looking forward to the completion of the renovation of the indoor pool, and it going out to bid shortly and being done around November of 2024.
Yeah, I thank you for that. I understand the angst about the timeliness, but the process that we have undergone since acquiring the Doris Miller Community Center, period, was far more than anybody anticipated. And what we won't do is open a pool that isn't safe for our residents. So, you know, I think it is important that we took this opportunity to see how can we make it better. And it kind of sucks that it's not open in the summer, but we couldn't get it done in time, because all of this stuff takes time. Finding the right architect, finding what, well, actually looking to see what was wrong in the first place, figuring out what was the best course of action to rectify that problem. Should we just redo the whole thing? How are we going to do it to make sure that going forward, we're offering our community the very best that we can? And to date, I think for that, how much money have we spent? Do we, around number, anybody?
On the community center as a whole?
On the community center as a whole, and with the, because the pool's, what, 900?
It's four or five million.
Four or five million dollars.
Yeah, I'm getting fours and fives. It's a considerable investment.
And I think that we've done that in an effort to speak to those residents in our community, in my district, because we do want to offer our very best. And I don't know that that has been for a while. And so in order, in an effort to stand up the way we want to stand up, the way District One deserves, the way young people all over the community deserve, we're going to offer the very best that we can. And that is the commitment that this city has and that this council has made.
Yeah, I fully agree. I'd rather wait and get it absolutely right than rush into it and risk anything as an investment. But I also do appreciate my son having participated in the Doris Miller Community Center Summer Camp this summer, is that they've already taken him, all of the community center camps are taking the children to Hawaiian Falls as part of the camp programming. So they're at least trying to fill that void with kids that are participating with that Parks and Rec program, so that there will be some swimming opportunities for those children at least. So I just wanted to plug those camps in addition, as part of a swimming strategy.
Right. And the fact that, you know, nationally, you know, people, what was it, in the 80s, I guess, 90s, they closed pools for everybody, which was terrible, but, you know, cities decided they didn't want that liability. Well, we understand the importance of what water education is, and I mean, the fact that we are a river city, we certainly want people to know how to be in and around it safely. There are so many things that we're advancing, and so water education is a priority for us. And there is a great expense to that, but a necessary one and one that we're committed to make.
All right, council, we've also got three public hearings on the agenda today, all the items in relation to our Community Development Block Fund grants. Galen Price, our Director of Community Services, will go over that here in a few minutes in the work session. We've got a total of 40 resolutions on the agenda, and because we have a lengthy set of work sessions, I'm not going to highlight any specific resolutions, but we'll take any questions that you have, if you've got questions on resolutions.
Any questions? I just got two quick points. Resolution 474, where we are authorizing expenditures of $600,000 for software service in our dispatch and records management. We are trying to provide best-in-class services across the board in the city of Waco, and this is sort of part of our intentionality and our effort of getting the best software we can, and to provide the best possible service to the community, both in the process, the systems, the software. And this is no small investment, but we should reap rewards here on the police department software. The other one I want to just touch on for a second is number 492, or 30, Resolution 2024, 492. And it's the Clay Avenue sidewalk, or about a half a million dollar sidewalk improvement. This is, Councilmember Bearfield, Mayor Pro Tim, Ewing, and I were all out in Washington, DC last week. And this kind of program, you wouldn't think, the sidewalk started with a, a federal program called the bipartisan infrastructure law back in 2021. As part of that, there was a CRP, carbon reduction program. As part of that, the local NPO applied to get this little sidewalk fixed up through federal funds. I guess what I want to say here is, and we ran into it a lot last week, too, where we were asking for help with water, or ideas on water, and we were told, hey, try the Transportation, Department of Transportation, which doesn't seem intuitive. But what, the point I'm making here is that I appreciate staff keeping an eye on all the different programs that are available at the federal level, and sometimes not intuitively. Who would have thought to get a sidewalk fixed in a carbon reduction program? Anyway, so I appreciate everybody's attention to how to get funding for the city of Waco, not through our local taxes, but through federal funding, and get a great sidewalk out of the deal. That's all I had, Bradley.
I just want to call out Resolution 475 as it pertains to the ratifying of the submission of the Connect and Protect Grant. This will allow funds to be used for alternatives to conventional policing, allowing us to equip our police department with licensed social workers to address instances for individuals in mental health crises. As we continue to work towards, we have another resolution on here today for the expenditure of funds for PACES to continue to promote collaboration between our hospital systems and get a holistic solution for our individuals that are facing crisis, specifically with mental health here in our city and our county. And so I'm just really happy to see both of those appear on the same agenda. So just to show that we are continuing to be thoughtful and creative in ways that we approach addressing the needs of our community. So one of our sort of core tenets and goals is a safe and resilient city, and I think this addresses that.
Any other questions on the resolutions? That's all we had. Did you?
That's all I had. But a reminder, we're going to pull 479 from consent.
Okay. All right. So the consent agenda includes Resolutions 2024-463 through Resolution 2024-502. Are there any other items the council would like to remove from the consent agenda? Just 479 with the special language. So the consent agenda will include Resolutions 2022-463 through 2024-502, except for Resolution 2022-479. The next item on the agenda is work session, items 2024-451 through 2024-453. City Manager Ford, would you please introduce the first work session?
Sure. I think we've got a whole busload of people coming up. So half the audience is about to come up here and try and set the tables. No, we've got work session 451. It's discussion of the downtown master plan project. Tom Balk, our Director of Strategic Initiatives, is here with a variety of team members to give us an update on what all's been happening over the last six months since council selected the Hunt Development Team as its development partner. Just want to, Tom, is it okay if you introduce each of the parties?
Yeah, absolutely.
In a moment. And just want to say a quick thank you to Tom for his stewardship on this project. It's been a little bit like herding cats, and a lot of meaningful work has taken place in a very short amount of time. And so I'm excited for the council to hear it, as well as for the public to hear it, and start stewing on where we're at and where we're headed. Tom?
Thank you, City Manager Ford. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for the opportunity to present this exciting update today. We're here to deliver the strategic roadmap for the future of Waco's downtown, which is a vision that is longstanding, has grown over recent years in particular, to deliver solutions to the longstanding vacancy that we've lived with and we've dreamed a better future for. And so from that standpoint, we began this effort to develop some definition around the path and process ahead that can serve as a north star on how to incrementally work our way towards a rich pedestrian-centric fabric that can be embraced and beloved by our residents. So today's request is tied to a request for adoption of the document. It's included in your packet. It was published on Friday, and it's 90 pages. So we welcome a lot of detailed conversation. We've made time for that with the slides today. Feel free to interrupt us at any point. I'm joined here by a select group of representatives from a world-class team. We've got Hunt Development Group that's been selected as our master developer. I'm joined by Rodney Moss. We've got Ally Berkman from Overland. We've got Elizabeth Farso from EBF. We've got Jacob Bell from Walker Partners. We've got Steve Hammerly from Hunton Partners. And we've got Ryan Sheridan from Hunton Partners. This team collectively, they're here to deliver two reports essentially that are deeply intertwined. We've got the strategic roadmap, but that's founded on several, a multitude of key documents, but including the downtown financial feasibility study performed by Hunton Partners. So you'll see those slides incorporated within. A little bit of background, just to set the stage, as I mentioned, this vision has evolved over time, and it's fair to say that it started much further back in time than 2022. But for all intents and purposes, in 2022, really began an effort to analyze and understand what would it mean to address the fact that the city hall that we have currently is 100 years old. It was built for a capacity that reflects that era. So our staff entirely fit in that building 100 years ago, and it's time to plan for the needs of the next 100 years. Right now, we've got a workforce that has grown tremendously beyond the borders of that building. We've got 75 different facilities that we service, not only staffing, but public services from. And so there's a benefit, and there's an importance to our community to streamline where we're offering services. There's also a managing, a management efficiency to bringing more of our workforce into closer proximity. So that's really where the impetus began, to take another look at, if we're bringing that sort of workforce impact into our downtown, how do we make sure that that investment has maximum impact towards resolving that longstanding issue of persistent vacancy in our downtown? So that exercise began in 2022 by hiring Ginsler. Y'all authorized the contract to move into that study, and they quickly helped open our eyes to a few key elements that are game changers. The alignment that they uncovered in a potential partnership with Waco ISD is tremendous. What it did was, it revealed that there are similar needs affecting our same residents for our partner agency. So operating in an aging building downtown that no longer fully meets their needs, and opened the conversations about what would a future look like where we bring those services into the same campus, same unified public service campus. So with that, it creates an opportunity also to talk about the future of 23 acres just adjacent to our town square with the Waco ISD, what has formerly been several school campuses and currently houses Kendrick Elementary. But at the end of 2025, there's an opportunity to talk about the future of the former middle school campus in the heart of downtown. So significant to the project in a lot of ways. What that also revealed for us is that one of the game changers to resolving persistent vacancy, it really comes down to pedestrian-centric thinking and placemaking as a design strategy. So Ginsler did a lot to educate us and bring that to our attention and uncover some of the key ingredients that Waco already has to do so, and helped us prepare for the next crucial step, which was a request for qualifications to bring in a world-class national developer, master developer for our project, which has grown to become essentially 100 acres. We've got 83 parcel acres plus a significant amount of rideaway and riverfrontage. So together, that's a massive impact in the heart of Waco's downtown on a dynamic riverfront. So with that, robust competition ensued, and we were able to select Hunt Development Group, and I'm going to hand it over to Rodney.
Good to be in front of you again. I just want to say before I get started, I work with cities- Uh, I just wanna say before I get started, I work with cities all over the country, and just like you honored, uh, those city employees that, just a minute ago, your, your staff, their dedication, their talent is top of the list. You have so much to be proud of with this team, and it's been a privilege just to work with them and be a part, part of what you all are doing, so I want to say that. We chose the word roadmap very intentionally. This is not a strategic plan, this is a equivalent of a, of a navigation app on your phone, where you put in the destination, and it's a lot of miles and a long time to get there, but, but it gives you a destination and a roadmap to get there, and it's gonna recalculate at periodic times. And sometimes it may recalculate when you don't expect it, when certain events might happen. But what we, the output of what we've been going through over the last five months, uh, which is embodied in that roadmap, um, is a navigation app. And it allows, before the city makes any financial commitment, to think about the issues and then think about the business case behind it. So, um, you know, we have, uh, the right people with the right process, equipped with the right information, will get the right results. We have the people, we've, we're following a very proven process, and now it's all about getting the information and putting it into the, into the roadmap, so we can make sure that, that we're gonna get the right results. Elizabeth's gonna talk a little bit about her research.
Thank you so much for having us here today, council and mayor and staff. Um, you know, founded in research and I would say, uh, led by insight is a big part of our practice as a team. Um, you can see up here that we're just pointing to a lot of the sources that have acted as background for the development of this roadmap. Um, there's everything from really investing time in a deep understanding of the built environment of downtown Waco, um, understanding the incredible assets of historic structures, um, the ecology, the natural environment. Um, there's a lot of equity and assets in, um, research, survey, and planning documents that are part of the recent past and, you know, longstanding past, archival past, and also fundamentally in really understanding our end user, um, what matters to human beings in this community. Um, that's a process that we've started and will continue throughout the project at regular intervals, because at the end of the day, that's the most important thing here, is that the people that are in this space value it, feel seen in it, and that we have done that work to engage in that conversation ongoingly. Again, Tom, um, you know, this term placemaking is, is something probably we've all heard before, um, it's, it's a strategic mechanism through which we will design places that fundamentally mean something to people, get used a lot, are resilient and vibrant. Um, there's a lot of best practices associated with placemaking, but I think something that stands us out, um, in this process is working directly with this community, uh, present and past, to reveal and honor the unique characteristics of this place. Um, this is not a generic process, this is not about, um, creating a successful mixed-use environment. Um, it's really about, um, being inspired by Waco-ness at its core. I've had the privilege of just jumping into this, I'm from San Antonio, um, before this project, I knew a little bit about Waco, and I'm a, obviously a place person, but I've just been, um, so inspired to learn about the cultural characteristics, the built environment and physical characteristics, the community characteristics of this place beneath our feet, where people have been gathering, celebrating, um, being resilient in the face of great challenges, and using that as the inspiration for the principles of our placemaking is core to our process and will be so going forward. Um, so the tools that we use to actually do that, to bring that into the world so that it's not just theory, um, is we have worked together, um, with this community, um, with a lot of that background input that I mentioned earlier, um, to declare a vision. Uh, this vision, um, based on what Rodney was saying, this is, this is our destination. Um, putting this into language and using it as the governor for everything we do to hold ourselves and every part of, our, every party, part of this project accountable, is so important. Um, I worked, had the privilege of working at the redevelopment of Pearl Brewery in San Antonio for thirteen years, in deep partnership with our city, um, council and our city and our county, and early in the project, we put this language down, and we held it in front of ourselves at every step, and challenged ourselves, and said, are we taking every step to bring this vision into the world? Um, we also declared operating principles, and that's, this is phase one of that, to say, okay, these are the litmus test through which we navigate this process, which is complicated with multiple parties, takes a lot of time, has a lot of sequence, has those recalibration moments, but we always orient back up to our vision and to these principles, um, that you all have in front of you, um, and I hope that we will hear from you about them. Um, that is how we bring this unique place to life, this place that feels of, by, and for Waco. Um, we've also been using this term a gravitational center. Um, we use that term very intentionally to imply that this is a place that will draw people to it, um, over and over again, to use in a variety of ways throughout their lives, and generationally, that implies resilience, um, that replies, that implies love and, and, and excitement for, for this whole community and for visitors. Um, you can see that the implication here with this graphic is that the gravitational center of Waco is the suspension bridge. Um, it's the geographic center in a lot of ways, and we're, we're proposing that this center orients us to a downtown with a river running through it, the Brazos running directly through our gravitational center. Our project area for, at this phase, um, is addressing half of this gravitational center. Uh, the recommendation of this group, um, now and ongoingly, will be to continue to evolve and look at ways, not unlike Elm Avenue, um, and Bridge Street, about ways to connect from the, the side of the river over to east, uh, Waco as well. You'll see some in, in the design of our districts and some of the current plans, ways to create connectivity and stimulate engagement, but certainly, ongoingly, there'll be more work to be done there as well. But the idea is that we, we honor and celebrate this river at our center and create this gravitational center that implies both sides of it. As I mentioned, you know, I've, I've had this great privilege with our team of really delving into a lot of our downtown stories here, um, and again, that's not theory for us, that is the underpinning of a lot of our design practices. So you can see here, and the team will get a lot, into a lot more detail here, but, you know, historic downtown, a historic city center in, around, uh, this building, um, the, the implication of honoring and bringing back places like Caillados, um, thinking about La Pila as a place that has so much history in a built environment perspective, history in a community and cultural narrative perspective, um, also honoring and thinking about our ecology being on the banks of a river with tributary detail that we think we can reveal and celebrate as a practice, um, through which we will actually design new environments, infiltrating these different districts and neighborhoods. Um, you know, this is a very ambitious project, um, it's really an honor to be sitting here and contemplating such a transformational future. Um, when I was working with Pearl many, many years ago, at the beginning of the project, you know, when, if you were to go there now, it kind of seems like a fait accompli, like, yeah, it worked. Uh, but twenty years ago, when there was an abandoned industrial site surrounded by a, um, very underattended central city with tons of vacancy, generational vacancy, um, it was really a daunting task to think about, how can we transform this space? But, holding ourselves accountable to a dashboard that says we commit to, and that's why we use that language in the vision, an abundant future through which that transformation will deliver value, um, in a multi-dimensional approach, uh, which we can see that the community evolves, the value evolves, density evolves, residential, commercial, cultural opportunity erupts in this process, and then becomes exponentially more valuable for generations, is really the intention of this process.
Hi, Ally Berkman, I'm an architect with Overland Partners, and I'm gonna walk us through some of the defining districts that the Master Plan Design Team identified through this process. So each of these districts has a gravitational energy it brings to the Brazos Riverfront, and they all have distinct identities and experiences within them. They capture a lot of the storytelling that Liz was just touching on. And there's kind of two core districts here that have most of that history and culture kind of embedded within them. That would be the Barron's Branch District and the Waco Square District. But we've also created kind of a dumbbell of, uh, new development on either side of that. So you have on the Waco Drive side, the Ballpark District, and then on the Mary Avenue side, the Mary Avenue District with a convention center and performing arts center. And your riverfront is the thread that ties that all together, it's the bar within that barbell. These are woven together with a series of green spaces and pedestrian and vehicular corridors, view corridors, that create breadcrumbs for discovery and movement through each of these. So we'll start with the baseball district here. Baseball has been a really important part of history and culture here in Waco for over a hundred years. So we think it's really appropriate that you all have a stadium here, not dissimilar from cities like Tulsa, Oklahoma, One Oak Field. We think a great location for that ball, ball field could be at Waco Drive in the Brazos River, which would allow you to have the outfield spilled directly to the waterfront and could encourage recreational game time activities like sailgating. We also imagine that in a lot of the private mixed-use development around the stadium, that could offer bars and restaurants and places to shop, that you could also have special event, uh, game day event space, similar to Texas Live in Arlington. Um, ballparks are a great activation catalyst, um, in Tulsa, which we'll talk about in a little more depth later in the presentation. Um, of course, they built One Oak Field next to their arts district, um, which has now just taken off, you've seen a lot of residential development move into that space, and it's just created a really incredible thriving hub there next to, you know, in Tulsa's Arts District there. Um, we see the ballpark having a similar character to great iconic ballparks like Fenway Park, but also drawing inspiration from ballparks that have once lived here, like at Katy Park, former home of the Waco Pirates. And we'd love for this to be programmed three hundred days a year, so it's not just baseball, but it offers an amenity for other community, um, activities and events. Then we have Barron's Branch, this one is really akin to Pearl, it's almost the exact same scale of Pearl as well, and we'd like to create a similar experience here, in terms of a walkable, family-friendly, and thriving retail and dining destination. Um, something really unique here is the Barron's Branch Creek, which is a great opportunity for us to abate, um, some of the floodplain problems in this area, but we'd like to sort of kill two birds with one stone by allowing this to, um, show up as a really lush, green pedestrian corridor, so you can walk along that creek space that connects you to the Brazos. It is intersected by, um, Second Street or Caillados, which we see reemerging here as a great pedestrian corridor through the space, and at the intersection of those two, you could have a public plaza or shade pavilion for events year-round. A key cultural piece in this district is the Saint Francis Plaza, which would create a tree-lined linear park stretching from the Saint Francis Church to the Brazos Riverfront, connecting those two. Um, it's inspired by the history of churches as great community spaces, and will also create a signature space around the unearthed, spring-fed La Pila Fountain, that once, uh, it was a thriving spot along Caillados there. Then we have Waco Square. Um, the seat of government here in Waco has sat at the square since eighteen fifty-eight. We'd love to create a, a beautiful park with lots of, uh, shade and, um, shopping and dining and, and seating, that would connect you seamlessly to your riverfront and the iconic suspension bridge. In order to do that, we recommend that you parks within that stretch would become a managed street condensed to two lanes, that you all would be able to open or close as you need, and allow for public events and, and for visitors to connect directly from that park to Indian Springs Park and the riverfront. We would also have your new city hall, which would capture all of the displaced city services, um, in a new city hall campus at the northeast corner of the square, again preserving the seat of government within this historic, um, part of Waco. And we've been inspired by great town squares across Texas and Waco's former, uh, town square, um, and we've looked at a specific precedent, which is South Lake Town Square that you see, um, there in the top left corner. Um, we want this to show up as a thriving, walkable hub of local business and civic Then we have the Mary Avenue District, and this is where we're recommending the location of a new convention center and performing arts center, which should work in tandem to deliver conference and event experiences that are uniquely Waco. They should have a symbiotic relationship, and we're, um, suggesting a Mary Avenue Festival Plaza that would stretch between the two, at the terminus of Mary Avenue, and also capturing the Cotton Belt Bridge as it converts to a pedestrian bridge connecting this district to East Waco. We've had great partners in looking at convention center architecture and design with Element Architects, they've designed the Spokane Convention Center as well as the Vancouver Convention Center. These are great precedents for how convention centers can show up and have an iconic presence on a waterfront, connect beautifully to greenways and trails, and be a great amenity for cities. But we'd like to make sure that this convention, convention center shows up in a way that aligns with the historic character and quality of Waco, and specifically downtown Waco, but also has modern amenities and features, and has an identifiable form that people can recognize as they pass by on I thirty-five. And lastly, we have the Riverfront District, um, that threads all of this together. We'd like to bolster the incredible, um, networks of trails that are there, providing more pedestrian and bike infrastructure and additional green spaces, and we'd also like to preserve the monuments, sculptures, and memorials that are already here today. We see more active amenitized waterfront by adding things like boat docks, additional parks or dog parks, children's play areas, amenities for farmers markets to maybe take place here along the riverfront, and to bolster urban streetscapes and their frontage on your riverfront.
So, based upon all of our research, uh, what it told us was this is a rare and perhaps unprecedented opportunity to take advantage of a lot of things that are happening in Texas and nationally. Uh, we have a lot of federal money being dedicated to infrastructure, we have a national spotlight on Waco, uh, for lots of reasons, but more importantly, the economic spotlight of being in the center of the Golden Triangle where a half a million people are moving a year. And we think this is, uh, the time, uh, to attract this private investment in a way that, that has never existed before and may never exist again. One of the unique features about this project is that we're not trying to undo prior mistakes. There is a, a really cool opportunity here to do, to do many things in a thoughtful way, uh, in an optimized way. And we think that through this iterative process and building on the great work that Gensler did, we've come up with a, with really what the optimum plan is to attract this private investment. And, and we've provided this green space that, I, I don't know, I'm, I'm speaking for my industry and my colleagues, but green space is a magnet to private investment, and what we have done here is created the green space that is going to really attract, uh, the, the best and, uh, uh, most resilient private investment for this downtown in a very strategic
Good afternoon, I'm Steve Hammerly with Hunton Partners in Chicago. We were hired by the city to prepare a market demand, financial feasibility, and economic impact analysis of a proposed mixed-use development in downtown Waco. We assessed the market demand and financial feasibility of a minor league baseball stadium. Uh, we looked at mixed-use district analysis, which includes hotel, retail, dining, entertainment, residential, and office development. Uh, we looked at either the revitalization or construction of a new Waco Convention Center, and we're currently looking at destination use sports and the opportunity to let that anchor development in Waco and how that may fit within the development strategy we're talking about today. Hunton worked alongside the city of Waco and Hunt with the goal of putting together if, uh, a feasible, actionable master plan that is vibrant, authentic, uh, in a mixed-use district in downtown Waco.
Thanks, Steve. And I'm Ryan Sheridan, also with Hunton Partners, good to see you all again. Um, so our analysis covered a, a wide array of topics, but we're just gonna talk about a few of the headlines from the key ones today. So, starting with the minor league baseball stadium analysis, we looked across, um, all of minor league baseball in terms of performance of various leagues. We also interviewed ownership groups as well as, uh, minor league baseball themselves to boil down, um, three basic ways that the city of Waco can attract an anchor tenant baseball team into a stadium downtown. Um, the first option includes the relocation of a current minor league team from another market into Waco. The second option would be, uh, to brace for the MLB's projected expansion. Um, this expansion is projected to include two major league teams, which would accompany four, uh, minor league teams each, so eight there, and then additional two minor league teams, um, from existing markets that would need to be relocated, so a total of ten potentially on the table from an MLB expansion. Um, and then the third option would be to secure an independent league team, which has a lot lower barriers to entry. lower barriers to entry, that could act as a placeholder team in terms of waiting on an affiliated team to be a long-term anchor. So as mentioned before, wanted to kind of highlight the effects of One Oak Field in Tulsa, Oklahoma. We looked across the country at comparable projects, but Tulsa was a great example because of the investment that the city made in One Oak Field. It's a publicly owned stadium that is leased to the team there. And in 2010, when the stadium was completed, these assets that make it a robust district, we're not in the arts district in Tulsa, but the investment from the city on this baseball stadium really led to the development of a robust district, including multifamily units, hotels, high-class offices that have attracted Fortune 500 companies, as well as 182,000 square feet of retail and restaurant properties in the arts district in Tulsa. Really, this district has become the cultural hub of the city and has attracted a lot of that private development. So headlines just from the overall baseball analysis is that an affiliated minor league team offers the best ability in return to the city, but really does require a long-term approach with no guarantee of attracting that team from day one of the stadium opening. However, developing a stadium in the city that's built to professional league standards puts the city in the best position to be competitive in attracting an affiliated minor league anchor tenant in the long term. Again, affiliated teams and independent league teams have expressed interest in a stadium in downtown Waco that's accompanied by an adjacent mixed-use district that reached out to us and have expressed interest nationally throughout the process. Securing an independent league team franchise can serve as a viable interim, but can also be a sustainable long-term option as an anchor tenant. And then in order to really future-explore these opportunities in attracting that anchor tenant, buy-in from elected officials is needed to focus that energy going forward in achieving that long-term goal of having a stadium downtown. So moving on into the mixed-use analysis.
Real quick on the minor league baseball study here. In terms of feasibility, I've got a question about kind of securing a team, and then I've got a question about retaining a team. And has it been in your studying here, did you find that these communities, Tulsa and others, built a stadium in order to attract an affiliated franchise? Was that the path that they took?
That's correct. And what we found is that in different cities, that timeline varied. So in some situations, they built it with that agreement in place. In other cases, they were able to use these independent league teams as a placeholder. And then two, three years down the road, they were able to attract that affiliated team. Again, these cities put themselves in a position to have a park that was built to the standards of minor league baseball and made themselves an attractive destination for a team that their lease was expiring elsewhere. And for purposes of long-term sustainability of that franchise, ownership groups chose to jump ship to a different municipality with a better stadium.
Okay. If you build it, they will come approach. On retaining, you know, we've got a metro, Boski County was recently put into our metropolitan statistical area, which puts us at about 300,000. Of course, we're adjacent to Bell County, but Bell County on the other side of it has Round Rock Express that's affiliated. What does that look like? I mean, what level of affiliated are we looking at? Single A, Double A, Triple A? Can we support that with those numbers over time?
Yes. So we looked at the location of teams that are located in Triple A, Double A, Single A, as well as High A. And as far as competition to Round Rock, it's more about relocation adjacent to major league teams. So we wouldn't consider the capturable market. The analysis that we did using Placer AI showed relevant markets where people traveled to these different stadiums. And typically, we are seeing that the majority, roughly 80% of that visitation, came from within 25 miles of the stadium. So it's really dependent on the local community. And these assets are utilized and looked at as, from a public perspective, a way to bring people into a downtown area, provide entertainment to locals, and give people the chance to really have professional sports within the city. So as far as competition goes, when we talked with the MLB about potential competition between here and Round Rock, they didn't view it as a relevant distance that would be bringing into competition or concerns.
Okay. Thank you.
If I may say something a little bit. Y'all know I'm a baseball fanatic. My family is all in baseball. So I'm real supportive of the minor league baseball stadium. But I do want to tell the council, I'm looking around, I don't think there's anybody in here that's older than me, but I remember Arcady Park when we had it on Eighth Street, I think, Eighth or Ninth Street. And every Sunday, that's where all the families, parents would take their children and have a good time out there watching the different baseball games. I know my husband used to play there at that particular park, but that's something that we all look forward to going. So I'm hoping that the stadium will be about the same thing to bring families together to go and watch a baseball game or other events that are being held there that bring families from all over into a baseball stadium. I'm supportive of this baseball stadium. And we go to Round Rock a lot because my kids are select, they belong to select baseball programs, and so we go to Round Rock a lot. But I see in Round Rock, a lot of fields for the younger kids. I've never been to, I don't even know if they have a stadium, big stadium like this there in Round Rock. I've always gone to the, Jim, you've probably been there too.
Del Diamond's down there, it's nice.
So they have a beautiful stadium over there. Del?
Del, D-E-L-L.
Yeah, D-E-L-L, yeah. But I've been there as well, but it brings people from all over. And I think we're lacking here in the city of Waco, something like that. We haven't ever been, but it's not as big as Round Rock and all the other baseball places that you can take a family to. And anyway, bottom line is, I'm supportive of the baseball stadium. Long way of saying that.
Yeah, we had no idea you liked baseball. I'll just chime in here too. They're all, I mean, this isn't in Phase 1, and I don't want to interrupt you because I know you've got a lot of phases to go through. This is kind of imagining what all of downtown could look like over a 10, 15, 20-year period. So, and we're not suggesting this is in Phase 1 either, but there are challenges to getting an affiliated team. The league, I don't think there's any, I love baseball too. I'm almost as bad as Alice, but there are no High A or Low A leagues in Texas, so you kind of eliminate that. There's only, you have a Double A league here, Texas League, and then the Pacific Coast League plays here, so you'd be targeting a Double A or a Triple A league, as you guys have done the research. There's just, there are challenges around it. But the point I want to make is that if you were to build one, you'd probably try to build to that Double A standard, right? Just so you would have one that is available. And so my question goes to, an independent league, like the American Association has teams all over the West and East, I guess. But are those, those don't appear to be, the bar to get an American Association team isn't quite as high as, obviously, to get an affiliated team is, I think you've targeted the right way to think about it, the expansion, right? But again, this is many, many years off, but I think it's fun to talk about it.
Yeah, it is. It's fun to talk about.
Certainly. And with respect to the development team, again, bringing up the point that this isn't recommended in a Phase 1, but on a sliding scale when the opportunity arises, but also to the point of independent league performance, attendance levels, and looking at the performance of those teams, and knowing that ownership groups for the independent league team in Texas are actively looking to bring more independent league teams to Texas, could serve as a potential good placeholder for an anchor tenant for a stadium.
Great, thanks.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you, Mayor. And then really to piggyback off the point, Councilman Rodriguez, we can continue with the mixed-use district is.
I'll let you.
When you bring people downtown and families downtown to a ballpark, you also need to support it with the mixed use and give them something to do outside the ballpark. So currently, when we look at the project site, seeing an overall lack of these assets. Currently, this project area, lack of assets that are supporting the convention center. But as we look to the long term and talk about public investment in facilities such as a convention center or a baseball stadium, knowing that mixed-use assets, including retail, restaurant, are going to be vital to maximizing that economic impact from those investments, and knowing that these are going to be vital to the long-term sustainability of the project and for the return of the city. So as we get into some of the analysis with the mixed use, Tom, go ahead, thank you. We also looked beyond just the stadiums of these comparable municipalities, but we also looked at the districts that they're surrounded by, as well as non-sports-oriented districts as well. They really, the four things that are consistent across all of them is live-work-play assets that contribute to density among these districts, overall design that infuses local culture to make them authentic, as well as unique destinations, walkability for easy accessibility for all, as well as public spaces and those gathering spaces that really emphasize bringing people into the downtown area as a community. As far as Waco insights go for the commercial markets, very high demand for specialty-oriented grocery stores, as well as entertainment-based retail and restaurants downtown. As far as office goes, currently, a moderate level of demand, but we expect this to change over time through case study analysis. Places like Tulsa that we've talked about, currently, they have 620,000 square feet of Class A office space. In 2010, when that ballpark was built, that did not exist downtown. And now, through those public investments, they've attracted tenants downtown, and they want to be in that high-activity area. So high upside there in terms of the office demand. And then multifamily demand, supply is growing downtown. Demand is also very high, especially coming out of COVID with a lot of momentum of development downtown. Demand drivers currently aren't seen as being in a district downtown, so it's hard for people to justify paying higher rents for these multifamily properties, but nonetheless, demand is high for more properties downtown. We also just laid out some inputs for what led into our economic impact projections, but we can get to those in a minute here at the end. Also wanted to cover the convention center and headquarter hotel analysis that we prepared. So when it comes to really success of a convention destination, wanting to highlight that a modern convention center that's appropriately sized for the market, quality, in terms of quantity of quality, walkable hotel rooms, a modern connected headquarter hotel and walkable assets for convention goers really elevate the profile as a convention destination. So throughout our research, we looked at regionally competitive convention destinations that Waco is currently losing its business to, as well as interviewed meeting planners that routinely bring business or no longer bring their business to the city. And really, two headlines came to the top. The current convention center is undersized in nearly every function, as well as these meeting planners, when they come to the market, they expect to be able to bring their convention goers to five or six hotel properties. They're having to source 10 to 12 for some of these larger, more impactful events, which leads to a lot of operational inefficiencies on their end, and ultimately has led to a lot of lost business for the city, as well as the economic impact that comes from their events, because they have better options in terms of the overall operations of a convention in different markets. Really, a lot of that results in the lack of a headquarter hotel that your competition has undertaken as a priority. So as we look at trends and really the highlights of a headquarter hotel, what that brings to the city, extensive analysis on the market-wide lift to all hotels when a headquarter hotel is introduced to the market. And on average nationally, these projects have about a 40% deficit or a 40% feasibility gap that the public sector is nearly always involved in. Our projections, as well as factoring in assumptions of a new convention center, as well as a compelling mixed-use district, have this at about a 35% subsidy needed, required by the public sector. So in order to be a successful destination, three things need to happen, and we can cover that, Tom, on the next slide. Oh, sorry, just overall recommendations for what that property would look like. A 350-key hotel room associated with a strong brand family, various food and beverage offerings throughout the hotel, 28,000 square feet of function space, as well as a full-service fleet of amenities to make it a full-service hotel. But again, to achieve this as a destination, three things need to happen. A new publicly financed convention center, a public-private partnership needed to execute a headquarter hotel, and opening of these properties at relatively the same time in order to take advantage of the operational efficiencies that they each bring to the table playing off of each other. And again, here are just the inputs that we use to guide the projections for the economic impact on this phase of development. And when it comes to the overall recommendation for the new convention center, effectively doubling the size of the current footprint with enhancement to the exhibit hall, ballroom, and meeting space. So rounding out with the economic impact projections over the life of the project, looking at a combined about $2 billion in net new spending, $2 billion in net new earnings, roughly 2,300 net new permanent jobs for the city of Waco, as well as much impact from local taxes generated and state taxes that could be recaptured and dedicated to the project. And then just one keynote we wanted to make as well, on the baseball stadium, the impact there, really, it doesn't factor in the additional mixed-use development that would be brought online with the introduction of a stadium. So impact of that phase development would look more like what you're looking at in the middle column. That was really the result of that initial phase of mixed-use development. So would be accompanied and really would be a lot greater in terms of the overall impact, but wanted to isolate the baseball stadium itself. So thank you all, and I believe that's it from Hunnand. So thank you.
Thanks, Ryan.
So one of the shortcomings of traditional master plans is they do a great job of presenting pretty pictures of the what and where, but they don't spend a lot of time on the how and the when. The sources and uses for these kinds of investments always have to balance. And so we've spent a lot of time building a robust financial model that would inform recommendations of what can be achieved and how soon. We've looked at the existing tools in the toolkit in terms of revenue streams. We've created in that model what we think is a reasonable portion of those current revenue streams, by no means exhausting them, but allowing lots of capacity for other things, but reflective of the importance of this project from an economic development standpoint. We've also put at top of mind finding new sources of funds, whether it's a PFZ like Corpus Christi achieved last session, federal grants for floodplains, park, and transportation. So we are making that a core piece of our strategy, is to go find additional new revenue streams and build those into the model as quickly as we can. So phasing is important, as I said. The how and the when of this obviously is the whole picture, but breaking it into the parts so that it can be achieved in a way that is accretive to itself and creates high impact of early investments, what has been our agenda. So here you see with those four phases. First Phase 1A is about the enabling infrastructure. Jacob's going to talk in a moment about the infrastructure capacity issues, not beyond just the floodplain of downtown to support this kind of investment. The city has to demonstrate that the infrastructure in place can handle the development or it won't come. So we've made that our Phase 1A. Hopefully, in a year, starting in a year, it'll take about two years to do all of that. I'll break it down in a second. Phase 1B is the start of the town square development that would mainly involve the new city hall and Waco ISD building, but also the streets and utilities that would create the parking capacity that would be needed for bringing 1,000 new government employees Phase 2, why it's next and most important is you have to get the convention center relocated so you can create the town square. So that would be the next phase, starting in approximately 2029 and finishing in 2033. Phase 3 would be finishing the town square development and allowing all of that private investment to happen around the town square. And then Phase 4 is the baseball district, again, which is, could happen at any time, depending on when the teams are available and when the city, you know, the confluence of events is right to create that. One thing we do know is that the private investment will only come if the baseball field is there. And so it is, you know, you've got to create that. field is there, and so it is, you know, you've got to create that equation to make that district happen, and there's a lot of factors there.
So, with these phasings, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't step on you.
I'm just mumbling.
With these phases, the idea is that we would not have a gap in convention center offerings during this, is that correct? So, we would keep the old until the new is built, basically?
Yes, that's correct. No interruption at all. So, it's really important, I think, you know, to think about how that new convention center hotel interacts with the current convention center hotel, and so there's a lot of things there that, you know, you've got to work out, but you don't want to build the new hotel until the convention center is there. So, there should be no interruption to the convention function.
Okay. Thank you.
So Jacob's going to talk for a moment about Phase 1A and why it is so critical and strategic.
Thanks, Rodney. So, in the quadrant of images, in the top left, you can see a picture of the Barron's Branch floodplain, that's that kind of blue hatched area, and you see that it's sprawling. Barron's Branch goes underground into a culvert or a tunnel between 4th Street and U Parks, and that culvert cannot adequately handle the 100-year storm event, so some of it goes underground, the rest sprawls out at the surface. So, our game plan is to install a second culvert, parallel to the existing one, to get the 100-year storm completely underground, and then we can revise the FEMA floodplain map and recapture 13 acres of area that is presently floodplain, which would unlock 19 acres of floodplain in really this whole first phase. As far as utilities in this area, and for that matter, all of downtown, most of the utilities downtown are either at or under capacity or very old. As a matter of fact, in the Barron's Branch District, the two primary, two of the three primary water lines that feed downtown are between 60 and 80 years old. So, it's time for them to be upgraded anyways. We plan to work with the utilities department, have already been in conversations with them to make sure at a macro level that downtown is getting the amount of water it needs and has the sewage capacity for the full redevelopment of downtown, as well as at a micro level, when we reconstruct the streets that were replacing every water line and sewer line to make sure we have modern infrastructure with adequate capacity. And speaking of streets, we will be rebuilding those as we go through the phases. That will include new vehicular pavement, as well as adequate storm drain system, much of downtown has an inadequate storm drain system right now, and then new sidewalks, illumination, landscaping, and all of that streetscaping. We'll start with the recent downtown implementation plan that was adopted, and we may modify it as it fits this project, but generally speaking, that's where we will start.
So, Phase 1A, the cost, projected cost of that is $142 million of design and construction costs with $167 million all-in, planning to start in June of next year and finish in two years. The 40% of that project directly ties to what was already discussed and really kind of determined in the downtown implementation plan, but it's been deferred pending a lot of this decision about what downtown needs to be. $68 million of that would be funded by revenue-backed enterprise funds, and then roughly $99 million will be supported by TERS 1 and the forecasted revenue that starts freeing up in 2028. In terms of return on investment, it's a 2.2% return on investment for the city, $368 million of net present value of return over 50 years. The school district also would be a big beneficiary of this investment, generating $312 million in net present value tax revenue over 50 years. This is how it breaks down from a floodplain drainage, water utilities, wastewater in the enterprise, and then 22% and 39% funded from the TERS. What that unlocks in that 19 acres that Jacob was talking is roughly 1.25 million square feet of development. So, these are some renderings, you've seen these throughout the presentation. I do want to highlight the Barron's Branch Riverwalk or Creekwalk with the bridges going across to the left side of the left image. I mean, this is next-level park amenity, this is going to be as cool as anything seen, but it's really going to create that initial gravity and community space, even without the vertical buildings, it'll have that entertainment pavilion and the places for people to gather. The image on the top right is the St. Francis Paseo or with the La Pea Fountain there in the foreground, and then the cross-section will be the Barron's Branch Creekwalk. So, we're going to be bringing in a future meeting the total breakdown of the predevelopment cost and schedule for Phase 1A. The current projected design cost during the predevelopment period to get to a financial close is $11.75 million. That would be spent over that year. Varying levels of design, we would have the streets and utilities fully designed and bid, and then we would be looking for a target value design, once we figure out what those are, to get to a guaranteed maximum cost and schedule. Again, we talked about the benefits of what that would unlock for the city from a revenue perspective.
Importantly with that as well is the large design approach, coming right out of the gate, helps us be aggressive about pursuing the grants that can improve the financial equation as well.
Yeah, until we have that engineering analysis, the FEMA grants and the park grants and those things will not get to the top of the list, so making that investment in that engineering, regardless of where they decide to move forward the project, you've got to do that engineering so that you can get to the top of the pile on that grants, which are coming quickly.
Rodney, or maybe Tom, the design costs, $11.75 in the overall cost to develop is $167, is that, is the 11 included in the $167?
Yes. Yeah, that's the all-in cost.
Okay.
And is that a general fund expense, whereas the others are enterprise slash TIF?
The design as a component, you're asking? The design would probably be representative of the funds that are doing the construction as well, however, the financing mechanism can take a number of forms, and that's yet to be determined and recommended with the next step. There can be gap financing, essentially.
Yeah, Hunt could finance it, the city could pay for it and reimburse upon financing. We're completely agnostic, but what we do know is that we need to get started, because the critical path is that FEMA floodplain issue, and that's a year, and every day you wait on that is a day you're waiting on everything else, so.
So, the idea for 1A is you upgrade the utilities in this section that are so critical. By doing that, you enable adjacent growth, and by dealing with Barron's Branch, by adding another culvert, you recapture some nearly 20 acres of land that's currently unbuildable under the FEMA map, is that right?
Yeah, you can't finance it because it's in the floodplain.
Okay, so, once that map is changed, this 1A will essentially let our development tap into that for commercial development, which in turn will be tax generating, is that the idea?
Right, it unlocks about 1.25 million square feet of development that creates this, really, the only way you get this full development is to unlock this middle piece. If you don't unlock that, then you've got these disparate parts again.
Okay. And it, in and of itself, designs a kind of live-work-play corridor there with the St. Francis area and some nice public park space as well. So, besides the infrastructure component, in and of itself, it could stand as its own development.
Right, that's why Alicia was saying, two birds with one stone. You're solving a problem, but you're also creating the catalyst for the private development that is absolutely imperative for everything else.
The private development doesn't just generate the tax revenues, it also brings a lot of those. Through the Form-Based Code and guidance from this master plan, it delivers those amenities that'll help serve the people that come down here. So, food and beverage, other attractions, so that ground story is going to be incredibly prescriptive and super informative to how we reward the folks that come into this area.
So, this is the timeline for the 1A year-long predevelopment scope. It's not just about Barron's Branch, we're going to be doing this Form-Based Code for the whole development, we're going to be doing a schematic design for City Hall to make sure we get that cost and scope right. Again, the FEMA, street utility design, all of it will culminate in a permit from the Corps of Engineers to move forward with the project in a year. What's important about this is that we understand its continuous feedback, both from high public engagement with website, newsletters, all sorts of public engagement events, because that is, they need to be a part of understanding what this is going to be, and then feeding back into council, what's happening, how much it's going to cost, is there any surprises, those kinds of things.
And so, I mean, that's a lot of ground to cover, we recognize, that's a lot of ground to cover in the 40 or so minutes, 45 minutes, so we know there's room for a lot of discussion here, and we welcome questions, we can scooch back to any previous slides, just help us flesh this out a little bit further in your understanding.
Does anybody have any questions of the parties?
Hey, it's just me. I'm sure questions will form out of my comments here. I am broadly supportive of this, I really appreciate the strategy that's gone into creating this phased approach, and I appreciate the way in which you've made it analogous to a GPS routing that is continually changing and adapting with what is before us. Because of the project of this size, that is always the, always sort of the cliff that you're in danger of running off of, is you get to a certain point, we've spent tens, if not hundreds of millions of dollars, and all of a sudden, support is no longer there for something like this, and you've literally built a monument to, you know, nothing. So, I really appreciate the strategy and the phased approach. I think we are really fortunate that the first phase includes such beautiful amenities like the Barron's Branch Creek efforts and the La Pea Fountain, because while those are necessary to enable the rest of what we're needing to do here, it's also a really huge win, I believe, to generate a lot of community support to the amount of dollars that we're spending right off the bat. So, again, the thoughtfulness behind this, I really want to continue to commend. One thing I thought of, just as the presentation was persisting, is, and this is not new, I just hadn't thought about it up until last week, when U Parks from 35 to the railroad track reopened, but man, poor U Parks is going to be just getting beat up for the next decade plus with this plan.
Too soon, man, too soon.
Yeah, we just got it back, and, you know, again, when it's all said and done, we will be better for it, but it was a thought that crossed my mind. One note, the last phase that includes the ballpark, looks like, was the deliverable on that 2036, 2038? I don't recall what it had on the, I can scroll back on mine, too.
2036, and I'll probably be dead by then.
If Vince is in modern medicine, Alice, we don't know.
You've got to throw out the first pitch.
Maybe we should start Phase 4 first.
Counselperson, we're trying really hard.
The money comes, the things come.
That's right, that could be accelerated.
One good thing to call out there, though, is the MLB's planned expansion to two teams is, I believe, planned to happen in 2029, and so this sort of curtails that really well. And frankly, while the Field of Dreams approach does seem to be the most common way of getting these teams incentivized to come to your city, I believe firmly that if we have initiated Phases 1 through 3 by that point and shown in good faith that we're moving towards this, we'll have a really good case to get someone to commit before we have to erect a ballpark.
So, Hunt is a AAA baseball owner-operator.
Yeah.
We have talked to four that all are clamoring to get here.
Yeah.
So, I've been astounded by the interest in what people see in what this is and what Waco will be from a market standpoint. I did not expect it, so.
Something about that river, man.
Yeah, so there, it's all about this confluence of MLB expanding, a franchise wanting to move, they have 10-year leases, you know, some of them are in early years, some of them are just signed a new one, so there's just so many moving parts, but we know that they're coming, it's just a function of getting the time right.
Yeah. And then the last note that I had, and Jacob, I really appreciate you calling this out, is just throughout all of these phases, obviously Phase 1A being the first here, and not even just specific to, in conjunction with this redevelopment on the riverfront, but as this is ongoing, continuing to look to and prioritize our existing downtown implementation plan, and as we are spending money, that's going to allow us to implement parts of that, like with the redevelopment of the utilities, having to tear it up anyway, so why not go back with the plan we have in place, that is really important to me. I, again, am broadly supportive of this. One fear that lingers in the back of my mind is we would develop this beautiful riverfront, and rather than serving as like a catalyst, it may serve as a black hole for our small business owners just outside of this area of the gravitational center, and people would vacate there to come here in terms of foot traffic. So, making sure that we are continuing to implement our downtown, as he does from Kimberly-Horn, so that the rest of downtown continues to thrive, and we can make that improved alongside of this. That's all I got. Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Councilmember Ewing. I'm going to echo some of his sentiments and the appreciation of the approach. I was having a conversation with Tom Monday about the placemaking, and he shared, I guess it was you, Elizabeth, that, you know, you got sucked down the Waco rabbit hole.
Uh huh. It did.
And you were amazed, and you were transformed in what you didn't know about this community.
Yeah.
And the beautiful thing about it is, is that most of us do, but all of us don't. And this just brings the opportunity, because if it's, you know, depending on how far past we're celebrating or acknowledging, that people don't know, but it is fascinating to find out.
Yeah.
And the sense of place, the sense of pride, the sense of wholeness that this community stands on and for is so strong. That's why you were like, you can't help it, I mean, we, you know, we know. But that's why, in addition to all of the things, you know, that it will continue to build on, because its character is rich, but the work that is proposed in this first phase is necessary work anyway. You cannot function with 80-year-old pipes.
Not well.
Sorry?
You said not well.
I mean, no, not in the way we're growing and expect, that our residents expect to deliver, you know, because they really care that they turn the faucet on and it comes on, you know, and the stress it is on what we currently have in our infrastructure is great and is tremendous. And so, in, you know, as Councilmember Ewing said, with our implementation plan of downtown and our total streets package across the board, these are things that we identify that are necessary to be done, where do we start? And this is a starting point that will align with the future growth of this community, but also the enhancement of its foundation, its depth, its character, its strength, and so I think that it is wise to begin in this space, because I think that it is, it's visible enough that people will understand that we're, you know, this is not a plan that sat on the shelf for seven decades, but it is not inconvenient enough to, for people to be frustrated, I think. But I think that it's smart this way, I think that it also will allow some more money to come in potentially to pay for the rest of it, because once we take parcels that were non-taxable and put them back on the rolls, then they become assets for us to continue to grow and deliver. So, it makes sense to me in this manner. I encourage, you all are really awesome at finding the people who have the things, and I assume that that's the money things, too, so we're going to go find some more of it, and we're going to continue to spin these wheels. We will do as we have committed to do, and as the, however we can assist in, you know, shaking those federal trees, you know, we have just left from DC to do that, we will go back and do that, because there are federal monies that we need to make sure. I was sitting in. I was sitting in the White House, whatever day that was, and he was like, you all are not utilizing these monies as far as you can, and as much as you can.
Absolutely.
And so, I think we should. So, I appreciate this look. I'm, it is, there is, I mean, you know, change is change, right? And I think that we must walk in anticipation that we are going to have to bring our city along with us in this vision and journey. And so, the pieces of that that you all are responsible for, you know, when it comes to the community development and community involvement, I want y'all to make sure you lean into that. Because we cannot continue to be the amazing pieces of history that are indicated on these papers if the people don't know that that's important enough to you all. So, we got to bring everybody along when we do that. Thank you.
Any comments, Alice?
I already made my comments.
Alice already made her comments, okay? Thanks so much for the presentation, guys. You know, Waco, we, this council and this community thinks we're a world-class city, and we've got world-class partners in this deal. I mean, and the City Manager Ford and Tommy Bach there, you've done a great job of bringing it up to this point. And I appreciate the fact that we're bringing in this level. You guys are international, you guys are national. People know who you are all over the world, and that you're attracted to Waco. I think says a lot about the city, and says a lot about your great observations about being here in a good place. But Hunt, Overland, ABF, Hyundai, Gensler, just do some research on these folks. These are world-class partners. I just want to mention, and I think I talk about this every time we talk about the downtown planning, but in my corporate, I'm an investment banker in the corporate world. In our annual meetings, we always talk about BHAG, Big Hairy Audacious Goals. And it's not just a throwaway, but it's your five, ten, twenty-year plan of what do you want your company to be? What do you want your city to be? And to do that, you actually have to reduce it. You try to reduce it to writing. And some people, they want to be the best city ever, I want to be the best business ever. But you need to reduce it to this kind of vision, which you've done here, and I appreciate your work here for Waco's downtown and for Waco's riverfront. Setting the general parameters for this twenty-year plan is great. In a phased development where you can kind of bite off pieces of it as you go along. And you focused on sustainable urban planning, not, we've seen in the past some urban planning that just did not work. And I don't have to go that far back where people can remember when Austin Avenue was, had AstroTurf on it. That wasn't, that wasn't, that was not great urban planning. But on top of the urban planning, you're looking at economic growth, and maybe most importantly, community engagement. You want, you want the Waco residents to share or to have this. Tourists can come and look at it, too. But this is, this would be, this will be Waco's own place. So, yeah, thoughtful roadmap. I like how you put that, Rodney, with five phases. And just to break those phases out again, the Barron's Branch, Waco Square, a ballpark, riverfront, and Mary Avenue, with more focus today on phase one. Obviously, that's the one that kind of makes, to me, the most sense to start with as well. And it was called that Barron's Branch, Caillados is right there, too. I kind of like, which one do you like better, Alice? Caillados? I'm just guessing.
Both, yeah.
Right, Barron's Branch. Anyway, so anyway, the city, what I like about this one, and so, I think it's already been mentioned. The city already owns this land with WISD, so I think there are fewer hurdles to jump through as far as negotiating land purchases. And this has already been mentioned, too. There are already infrastructure issues there on this particular tract that inhibit, or really prohibit, any kind of further development, even in the context of that one site, let alone the connective tissue that we're talking about here.
That's right.
So, there's drainage issues, floodplain issues, utility issues that you pointed out, Jacob, streets that need to be improved. So, and it was interesting to see that forty percent of that number is probably money that we'll need to spend anyway, just to get it up to snuff. So, I like to see that redundancy of funding, I guess, in my mind, for lack of a better term. Lots of city history right here. I'm just, I love this part of the city, and I'm kind of disappointed that we haven't celebrated it up to this point. Because La Pila, we've tried to figure out what to do with that, and this is such an elegant solution there. Really love that, the idea of the, it's in the, I guess it's up there right now, isn't it? Right in the middle, where you have La Pila going back to St. Francis and having a little promenade there. And that's just the side of this property. I mean, the main part of this is the, to me, is the riverwalk. Well, I shouldn't say that. The main part, to me, is the commercial investment that's going to draw a bunch of money, draw a bunch of interest and generate cash. But the riverwalk, the fact that we already have a river and we'll have this cool riverwalk that's, to me, I like the way you said, Rodney, next level. This is next level from San Antonio. I mean, I think this will be above what San Antonio's put together. So, of something great, great for the citizens here. Lots of park space, at least, there's not a ton of definition in there, but you can see a lot of park space included in the early drawings. And most importantly, to me, as I said, is the, it sets up, and I like the way you said, unlocks. It unlocks this ability to get this return on investment. It unlocks the ability to put the 1.25 million square foot of commercial retail space to work in just optimal, optimal area and optimal place in the city. And I think that'll attract a lot of private investment in that type of deal. We're kind of, in the first phase, we're bypassing the chunkier pieces, I'll say. The convention center, the office space, the ballpark, a performing arts center. But I think, then again, we're not approving anything today except this plan itself. But getting started, I think will send a message into the business world and the investment world that, hey, these guys are serious about thinking two years down the road, five, ten, twenty years down the road. And here's, and here's how the investors, here's how I can fit into that. We're not going to attract any ballpark person or any convention space person unless we kind of start the ball rolling. So, right, we'll start sharpening our pencils on the finance and funding and the TERS and the enterprise funds and working with WISD on how all this works. And we can't do it all at once, but this seems to be the logical place to start taking a bite out of the, out of the development vision. So, you know, I appreciate you guys coming to Waco and helping us imagine what this is going to look like.
I'm fine.
Thanks, Rodney. That's all I've got.
Thanks, man.
Thank you, man. That's it.
It is? BB? You can brand that? All right, that's all we have. Thanks, thanks so much. Bradley?
As we clear out, our next work session council is Galen Price, work session four fifty-two, discussion of our 2024-2029 consolidated plan. And he's got a guest with him as well. I'll let him introduce her. We're running five to ten minutes behind, so we're not bad. So, don't feel rushed in these next two presentations, we're okay.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Today, I have with me Melissa Malo. She's our consultant with Mosai Community Planning, who's helped us develop our five-year consolidated plan for the fiscal years of 2024, sorry, 2025 through 2029, and our annual action plan for the 2425 program year. Now, our consolidated plan talks about our housing and non-housing community development needs that we plan to do over the next five years. Serves as a blueprint for our federal funding that we receive for CDBGN home dollars. Now, our 2024 annual action plan will talk about the specifics of what we plan to spend using our CDBGN home. And that was presented to you at our May twenty-first City Council meeting during a work session presentation, those funding recommendations. So, at this point in time, in the interest of time, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Melissa so she can go ahead and get through this presentation.
Thank you. And as Galen said, this consolidated plan and the annual action plan essentially identify priority, community development, housing, and homeless needs in the city. The annual action plan will serve as the city's official application to HUD to receive this grant fund, these grant funds. So, it is an essential component to receiving that money. For 2024, the city is expected to receive about 1.4 million in CDBG funds and about 677,000 in home. And then we'll talk about kind of how that looks compared to previous years in a couple slides. When we talk about what these funds can be used for, a key component to keep in mind is that they must be used to benefit low and moderate income households. So, for Waco, or nationally, that means households that make eighty percent of the area median income or lower. And in Waco, that translates to about, it varies based on household size, but for a three-person household, about 58,000; for a four-person, about 65,000. So, under those income levels is the folks who should benefit from these programs. You can also see that CDBG, in addition to benefiting low and moderate income folks, can be used to prevent slum or blight and address urgent community needs. And home specifically is focused on providing affordable housing. As I mentioned, there has been some changes in levels of funding from previous years. So, you can see here, over the past five years or so, the amount of money that the city has received from HUD. That CDBG number has remained relatively similar, about the 1.3, 1.4 mark. But you can see that the home figure is down significantly from 2023, so by about 130,000 or sixteen percent. So, kind of challenged to continue the city's housing programs with less funding this upcoming year. The planning process that we use for developing these documents involves an initial phase that consisted of gathering research, particularly focused on a community input, data collection, a participatory process that reached out to key stakeholders in the community. That took place in the beginning of the year, around January and February. And then into the spring, we worked on drafting drafts of this consolidated plan, annual action plan, and a fair housing study. And now, we're at the end of the process where we are ready to hold a public comment period and receive comments on the draft and present to City Council for approval later this summer. In terms of community engagement, we held three neighborhood meetings where folks were informed about the consolidated plan and how they can provide input, and three stakeholder-focused groups where agencies that worked particularly on needs related to affordable housing or provided services for low and moderate income groups were invited to attend and give input. We had about twenty-two focus group participants, including the Housing Authority, the School District, Prosper Waco, Neighbor Works, Grassroots, wide variety there. And then, one of the biggest ways we received input from the community was through a survey. We had 318 responses, and that included 292 in English and 26 in Spanish. I would say what we heard from the community overwhelmingly was an emphasis on the importance of the need for affordable housing and also measures to prevent homelessness and assist folks who are experiencing homelessness. I think those are probably the two biggest needs that we heard, which matches what we hear from a lot of other grantees nationwide that as, especially over the last few years during the pandemic, as housing prices have increases, increased, wages have not kept up, and people are having increased difficulty affording housing. In addition to talking to folks in the community, we also used a variety of data sources to pull information about demographics, housing needs, public housing, other types of needs in the community. You can see there a list, including the census, a special tabulation HUD does that looks at housing affordability, homeless counts from the continuum of care, and some other national data sources there. So, what we'd particularly like to share with you this afternoon is looking at what will the city's goals be, priorities and goals for the next five years. So, this consolidated plan is really identifying overarching ideas, things that the city will plan to work on over the next five years. And then, we'll talk about the annual action plan that is more specific about what will be funded in the upcoming year. So, in terms of priorities, for the five-year period, one of the biggest that we heard is that expanded access to affordable housing. So, that could include repair or rehab of existing housing, particularly for income-eligible homeowners, repair rehab of rental housing, or construction, acquisition, or rehab, so you're creating additional housing units. And then, also, under this priority, the city could provide tenant-based rental assistance, as it has in the past. Other affordable housing priorities, I mentioned a key need for housing and services to reduce homelessness. So, that could be providing emergency shelter or assisting existing emergency shelter operators, providing short-term rental assistance or rapid rehousing approaches that are going to help people avoid becoming homeless, and then also providing supportive services and case management for people who are experiencing homelessness. And then, finally, within this category, we would include fair housing as well. So, providing education and enforcement related to fair housing and preventing housing discrimination within the city. As we talk about community development priorities, a few of the things that we heard within this survey were a real focus on need for childcare and children's services, services for abused and neglected children. So, we have that reflected here. Also, services for other special needs groups. So, that could include victims of domestic violence, seniors, people with disabilities, maybe folks who are needing some help within the community. And then, other community development priorities, we have public infrastructure and facility improvements. That could include things like, you see picture there, sidewalk improvements, water sewer, community centers that are owned by the city or subgrants can also be made to nonprofit agencies that need to improve their facilities. So, this could be improvements that are kind of being done standing on their own. It could also include improvements that are being done in order to support the development of new affordable housing. So, perhaps putting in some infrastructure that's going to be part of an affordable housing development. And then, finally, HUD allows the city to retain some of the grant for its own administrative and planning purposes, so you see that priority there. As we think over the next five years, we estimated what the city's total grants might be based on what they're receiving this year. So, kind of how would that look if we extrapolated it for the next five years? And what would spending look like? So, you can see here that for CDBG, the biggest category there is housing rehab and repair. So, planning to use about 3.4 million in CDBG there. And that would translate to a goal of assisting about seventy-five homeowners improve their housing. We also have first-time homebuyer assistance, about 500,000 there, which would translate to assisting twenty-five new buyers. I'll stick with the housing ones. Housing development, acquisition, or rehab, which, that could be done by the city, or it could be done by a community housing development organization known as a CHODO. So, you see there that over the five years, we have about ten housing units estimated to be built by the city and about fourteen by a CHODO partner. We also estimate some spending for tenant-based rental assistance, assisting about fifty households. And then, finally, public infrastructure and facility spending that could support the development of two affordable housing units. A couple other goals, one related to public services. So, over five years, considering spending about $1 million in CDBG for public services, which would assist about seventy-five people with homelessness prevention, 500 people with other public 500 people with other public services, which could include things like children and family services, and 1,500 with access to shelter. So I'll look now at 2024 specific projects, which, as Galen mentioned, is what he presented earlier this year. So you can see there that for the Community Development Block Grant, which is again about 1.3 million, the bulk of that would go towards owner-occupied home repair or rehab. So that could be done by the city or by partner agencies focused on assisting low and moderate income homeowners make repairs. And you see about 833,000 dedicated to that. About 8% for homebuyer assistance. And again, that's working with a partner and with the city assisting on program delivery. Translates to about $107,000. And then finally, public services. That includes services for children and parents, homelessness prevention, homeless shelter operations, and support for the domestic violence shelter, which translates to spending about $156,000. And then you can see there, the city retains 20% for administrative and planning purposes. Home projects would be focused on the construction of new affordable for-sale housing. You see two units to be developed through CHODOs and then additional, excuse me, I think it's four units developed through two CHODOs, and then additional units to be developed by the city. And those would be made available to first-time homebuyers. And then again, on the administrative and planning side, the city can retain some of that home grant as well. You see here what the projected outcomes are for this year. About 30 units rehabbed, five assisted with homebuyer assistance, six newly constructed units, 15 folks assisted with homelessness prevention, about 100 with public services, and 570 with access to homeless shelters. We did, worked on a second study, a fair housing study known as an analysis of impediments to fair housing choice. That I'll go through quickly and then we can get to any questions. So this is something that HUD asks all CDBG grantees to do. It's something that cities and counties throughout the country do, looking at how well folks are able to access housing here. So under the Civil Rights Act, everyone has a right to, their right to own, sell, purchase, or rent housing of their choice without fear of discrimination. HUD has recently enacted some new rules related to affirmatively furthering fair housing, which asks cities and counties that receive HUD grant funds to make sure they're making meaningful actions to combat discrimination, overcome segregation, and foster inclusivity. So that's the goals of this plan. The study itself looks at things like integration and segregation, kind of where do people live? How does that look when it's put against race and ethnicity and income? How well are people able to access different types of opportunity? And does that vary by race or ethnicity, whether someone has a disability, factors like that? And then finally, housing needs, so how well folks are able to afford housing. So based on that study, we identified a few goals here for the city to expand fair access to housing. And they line up pretty well with activities that you'd be doing under your CDBG and home programs. So expanding access to affordable housing, including housing that's accessible to folks with disabilities. Trying to expand access to publicly-supported housing, particularly housing choice vouchers. We heard that that's some, can be a barrier that people have trouble finding housing that will accept a voucher. Assisting people maintain their homeownership and access homeownership. And then looking for ways to encourage economic development, job training, workforce development, to help folks obtain higher-paying jobs. And then finally, continuing to engage in fair housing education and enforcement activities. So that was a pretty quick overview of that plan. But just to let you know that we will be entering the public comment period. It will go through July 24 at 5:00 p.m. And comments can be provided in writing by email or by mail. And you see the website there to access the drafts. And with that, happy to answer any questions.
Do you have any questions for Director Price or Melissa?
Super fast, and this may be something that just can pop up on, in future information or on a future agenda item. The amount of money that were allocated from HUD, has that been reevaluated? Any, I mean, I know that there's a formula of some sort that they decide who gets what, but I was like, when's the last time they checked our numbers? Or is that not a thing?
It's looked at, it's looked at annually, but there's a, it's a real complex formula. And it's based on population, income levels, rate of poverty. I've been trying for 25 years to figure out how they get to the numbers that they get to on an annual basis. So it's, it's really an inexact science, I would say.
Well, because I just know, you know, I mean, it doesn't really change much over the, if you look at the five-year span, but it does change. And so I'm, I was curious if, you know, maybe it was a census year and that year they've changed it because the numbers shifted. Or, you know, if population declined, you know, I mean, or...
Some of that just depends on the federal budget and how much money they're actually allocating to CDBG and home programs.
Thank you.
Yeah, home did, did receive a cut this past year. So it translated down to the local grantees, which resulted in a higher cut.
Got it. Thank you.
Great. Director Price, Melissa, thank you so much for that presentation. CDBG and the HOME funds are so important to the city as far as our affordable housing and our community development go. A great five-year plan. And I appreciate how every year and almost every other meeting here, you have, something comes to council in the resolutions where you've creatively matched a CDBG or home funding with another federal or city or something else just to kind of rifle shot these programs into maximizing the home improvement efforts here in Waco, and I appreciate that, Director Price. Any other questions? I think that's it, Bradley. Do we have, do you want to introduce the next speaker?
Thank you.
Thank you all. Yep. One last one. Payne Kane? We've got Paul Kane coming up, Assistant City Manager. Give us a briefing on work session 453. It's a discussion of property tax rates, tax rolls, sales tax collection, and city manager's approach, development of the upcoming budget, which will be filed July 2nd, we believe. Paul's been working with a, with a budget team. He's going to talk about in a few minutes on kind of a leaner budget process this year. And that's a reality that he's going to speak to for a few minutes here. And one that I anticipate probably be with us for a couple of budget cycles, not just one. So look forward to Paul's presentation.
Thank you, City Manager Ford. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Paul Kane. I was the city manager. It's in my notes, I have to say it.
For the rec, do you want that in the minutes, Paul?
In the minutes. Payne Kane.
Paul Payne.
Identify himself.
So let's, let's move through this. Just, I want to talk to you about the property taxes, rolls and rates where we are, sales tax, our receipts and trends, and then talk about our budget development process and interview students and very valuable team members. So property taxes, let's take a look at that. So this, this graph you see here shows the preliminary rolls in the blue columns. The certified roll on which the property tax bills and the property tax, the budget is actually based are in the orange columns. And the amount that the operating budget is actually based on is an adjustment from the certified based on values in TIF, and that's shown in green in the graph that you have before you. The yellow is a percentage of budget as percent of the prelim. And I'll talk some more about that in a second. So nothing in 2021, the certified roll was 99% of the preliminary roll, very close together. And then the budget was just a slight adjustment below that. 2021 was a unique year. We were in the middle of COVID. Values didn't change much. There was a lot of uncertainty, certainly in the marketplace. And so you didn't see a lot of variation there. Moving forward to 2022, you can see the preliminary values were right at 15 billion. And then the certified rolls came in at 13.3. And then the budget was based on a roll of about 12.5. So you see that, the point of this graph really is to show you that we get the preliminary rolls in April. The certified roll comes out in July, upon which the budget is based and the formal tax rate set. In our experience, certainly over the last three years, there's always a reduction from the preliminary roll to the certified roll and to the budget roll. And that's what we have experienced in '22. We experienced the same thing in '23. So as we're projecting for 2024's value, which will be the values used in the '24, '25 budget, you see that the preliminary roll came in at 16.94, which is an increase of 420 million or just 3% over the previous year, which is not a lot. Looking at our previous trends, we're in double digits. So that's, that's a fairly unique change or a fairly significant change in the preliminary rolls as a, in terms of trend analysis, right? It's flattened out with just a 3% growth. So applying the same sort of logic or trends that we've seen in the past, preliminary rolls high, certified roll comes in less, and then the budget number is slightly adjusted off of the certified based on TIF values. You can see that what we're looking at is we've estimated what we think the certified roll will be, which is about 15.8 billion. And then an adjustment for TIF puts our budget number at about $15.1 billion. And that's the number that we're using for preparation of the upcoming budget. That number, as old finance director I used to work with often would say, is the wrong number. It's an estimate. The certified number will come out July 25th, and we'll know then exactly what the number is, and we'll be able to make modifications to the budget based on that. But I wanted you to see that we are using a number of about 15.1 billion, upon which the budget is based. That's about 89% of preliminary. And you can see where it's kind of trended over the last few years. So it's a, it's a safe assumption. It's always better to be a little bit conservative at this early stage and then adjust accordingly. So wanted you to see that. And for budgetary purposes, the year-over-year change is about 600 million or 4.1% increase. So this, this chart goes into a little more specifics about the taxable values on which the budget is based. You see the columns going across for each year. Those are the numbers that we used when we adopted the budgets. And you can see in the orange, the percent change year-over-year. As we move forward, again, we're looking at about a $15.1 billion number in '25, which is a 4% increase. Again, conservative, historically, we've been at about 8.4% on average. But the preliminary roll that we got, being only 3% more than the preliminary roll from the last year, really caused us to pause and exercise some caution and conservativeness in what we think the values will be for the next year. So that's where we are with property taxes. Let's kind of show you how that looks in terms of rates going forward. So we'll start at the top in white. '23, '24 is the current budget year. You can see again, 14.5 billion is the number that we use for the budget. We had a rate of 75.50, what it generated in total revenues. And then in the green, you see the M&amp;O rate, which is the rate that's used to fund operations and maintenance for the city. That was about 61.44 cents. You see the revenues that came in there. And then the INS, which is interest in sinking or debt service, was $20 million in revenue with a debt rate of about 14.06 cents. So that's where we are currently. Looking at '24, '25, where our current revenue projections are, again, the 15.1 billion, using the same tax rate. You see what the revenues would be from that. You'll notice that the, in '24, '25, the M&amp;O rate comes down. And that's because below that, the debt rate is going up. About $2.5 million in additional debt service next year as opposed to this year. So what that means from a operational standpoint, we're looking at just under $2 million in additional revenue, a 2.2% increase for operations. And then on the debt side, $2.5 million increase. And that's about 12.6% increase on that side. So that's where we are in the current preparation for next year's budget. Again, we hope to be surprised by better-than-we-thought certified values, which would drive down the debt rate as values increase and allow us to have, and council ultimately, to have some decisions on total tax rate and where we go with that. But this is where we are with the current budget development for next year on property taxes. So wanted to get that ahead of you now. We started this process with the council back on May the 8th in terms of a work session and budget retreat. Today, we're kind of formally kicking off the discussions leading forward adoption, leading towards adoption of the budget. So this is where we are with property taxes. Let's talk sales tax for a minute. This is a graph that is probably familiar to you. In green, you see the monthly sales tax amounts that come in. And of course, they vary up and down based on economics and consumer spending in the marketplace. You can see in yellow, the 36-month rolling average. And then in red, the 12-month rolling average. And we've talked a little bit about this before, but beginning in May of '21, really for that next year till April 2022 is when we saw significant growth. And you can see that, how it affects the 12-month rolling average. You take that turn up, and you see it starts dragging the 36-month up as well. So we had a period of really high growth, around 5.4% average growth rate. And then, beginning right after April of 2022 and since, it's flattened. And for example, in the last year, from April '23 to current, our growth rate is lower than it has been since 2018. And you can see that reflected in the red and yellow lines as they begin to grow closer back together and flatter in terms of slope. So that's, that's caused quite a bit of caution, I think, on our part in terms of forecasting and what that means. And as you figure in inflation, you're really losing money, honestly. And we've talked about that some as well. So a lot of caution here with sales tax. The thing I just thought, this might be helpful to you as you, as you think through sales taxes every year. This is a kind of a busy chart, but it shows you the monthly sales tax as a percent of the total annual receipts. And starting at the bottom, October, and then going up November through the fiscal year. So in October, revenue, 7.63% of an annual total. That reflects August sales, because sales, the receipts lag two months after. So you can see that the largest, 10.2%, is February. And that represents the Christmas season sales. And then notice that the next one up, May, is just slightly behind Christmas. And that's March, and typically, that's spring break. And a lot of people in town, a lot of spending there. So this gives you some sense of how the months stack. They're not all the same. They vary throughout the year. So what this tells us is historically, in June, we should have received about 74, 75% of our total sales tax for the year with the June payment. And that's one tool that we use to kind of forecast what was left and what are we going to see in the rest of the year and to forecast future years based on those receipts. So this really zeros in on sales taxes and where we are. So in yellow, you see June's receipts in '23 and in '24. So we're slightly ahead. We had a pretty good June this year as compared to last June. So we're up quite a bit. In orange is the year-to-date. In other words, that's that 75% number comparing year to year. So we're about $500,000 ahead of where we were last year. Last year, we finished at 55.7. This year, looking at trends, both 75% numbers as well as the averages, rolling averages, we are thinking maybe around 56.1 for this year, which is ahead of our 55.14 million dollar budget. So we're going to barely make budget this year, a little bit higher than budget, which is good. But it certainly leads us to have a whole lot of concern and caution about what's going to happen in '25. So you can see in '25, we've projected a budgeted revenue number of $56.5 million for next year. And that's only about half a million, 400,000 more than where we think we'll finish this year. So it's very conservative, but we would much rather go there than have to be short. And as we move through the year... And as we move through the year, um the remainder of this fiscal year as well as next fiscal year, if sales taxes are stronger, trends are better than we think, certainly council can amend the budget, increase those revenues, and those dollars could be used for whatever the council prefers. So wanted you to see where we are with our sales tax projections for next year at fifty-six, five, where we think we'll finish this year. A very slight increase, less than a percent year-over, in terms of actuals versus budgeted for next year. But conservative, have a lot of concern about what's happening with the flattening of sales taxes um on a go-forward basis. So that's where we are with our two major revenues.
Hey, Paul, on that that previous slide for the percentage of budget by month, um that seventy-four and a half percent, just to confirm, um that is representative of where we are currently, um right? For for this June, or is that the is that that's the projection of where we'd like to be?
It tells us historically by June, we should have received seventy-five percent of our revenues.
Gotcha.
So if you were applying that to the forty-two point five eight divided by seventy-five, that would tell you what the new number is. It's north of fifty-six, one, if you do it that way. Um, but we're seeing what's happening with the overall trends in the twelve-month and the rolling, so we dialed it back a little off that seventy-five percent estimate.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Yeah, um, do we do we have our June numbers yet, or are we getting those at end of month?
We do, yes, we do. The in yellow is the June.
Yeah, the June, okay, perfect.
That we just got. Um, usually get them around the tenth of the month.
Okay. So to date, um including the June numbers, are we at roughly seventy-five percent of our total for the year? I mean, I guess I can just do that math.
We're we're ahead of, we're ahead of that.
Great.
We're ahead of that. Yes, sir. Okay, um, any other questions on those two revenue sources? Just wanted to set the stage with you there. Those two are big drivers for the budget as we move forward, so I wanted to make sure we we began with those and give you a a feel of where we're headed with those revenues.
Right now, it seems like unlike in previous years, maybe not popping the champagne at this stage in the process.
I I would not, and you know, we'll we'll see what happens with certified, because again, the appraisal district's dealing with a unique, a number of unique legislative changes. You have residential values that some of them, uh the the actual valuations were higher than the ten percent cap, so they're kind of banked now, and we're not sure how that's going to drive up revenues or not. And so it's a it's a time of of some uncertainty. I think everybody feels a little bit of uncertainty with what's going to happen. So we're conservative now. If in fact the rates, the certified role is better than we think, as I said, it will affect rates and and push them downward.
Mandre, to be safe. Yeah.
It is.
Keep it on the, yeah.
We are being safe. Um, so let's talk a little bit.
Certified role is July twenty-fifth.
July twenty-fifth, and there's a real tight window for us um to to get that before council at the first meeting in August, as we'll talk about calendar-wise here, and then uh amend the budget that Bradley will recommend to you uh here in a few weeks um to reflect a new role. All right, uh so budget development, the first thing uh that I want to speak uh to you about and and introduce um three really valuable professionals that have have joined the team temporarily, and I'm going to actually ask them to stand. So we have Julie, Julie Richards, Samantha Poe, and Mindy Smith, ladies. So that is our. That is our budget team that all started about a month and a half ago. Julie came to us. Um, Julie is uh working on a contract basis, actually. Um, and she's um had budget experience at a number of cities and counties in Texas, including Dallas County. Um, began her career actually as an FBI analyst back in the day, um currently pursuing her PhD. And so we were fortunate to have her join the team, and she dove right in from the start. We asked a number of departments to uh consider helping us out, and so Samantha Poe came over from the library. And she's been pulling double duty, um doing her regular job and also doing the budget. And then Mindy Smith is our Fiscal Services Administrator over in Utilities. And her knowledge from the enterprise side, looking back at the general fund is super help, su- super helpful to us. And so she's been helping us kind of work that other side back to the general fund. So uh, great team, super glad to have them. Um, and it's been really a a lifesaver to have them come aboard. I think as we were talking about yesterday, I think everybody's kind of been baptizing fire on this, um but but uh we've been purified by that fire. Out of Baylor, so that's pretty good, huh? Um, all right.
I don't know if that's how it works, but let's keep, let's keep going.
So uh and and we're certainly glad to have have Blue uh on onboard as our CFO. Blue is quickly getting up to speed on everything. Um, he's interviewing people for his budget team now, putting his team together, so um Blue is quickly transitioning um and and going to be a super valuable uh member of the team and leading that team going forward. So we're excited about his perspective, what he's going to bring to the team. So thanks to to all of them uh for their great work and super appreciative of everything they've done. We would not be where we are, um were not for their great work and a lot of hours and a lot of late nights. So thank you. Thank you, Julie and and Samantha very much. All right, so our approach going forward, Bradley hinted at this a little bit earlier. At the left of the screen are some of the challenges we've talked about, certainly staffing is one of those, as I just mentioned. Uh, property taxes are appear to be flattening or not growing as they have been in the past. We'll wait and see how some of the numbers come through. Certainly, sales taxes is flattening. We're still dealing with inflation. And and compensation of our employees is a an integral part. You know, the city, the services the city provides are are provided through our employees. And we have to remain competitive in the marketplace to retain those employees. We also have to remain competitive to recruit new employees. And so compensation is always going to be a significant factor in any kind of budget development. And then our capital improvement programs, both are an obligations in the past, and I mentioned that our obligations are going up about two and a half million dollars um next year, and that's significant. Um, but it reflects council's commitment to growth and to developing infrastructure to support growth as well as replacing infrastructure that's aged and at the end of its useful life. So those are all things that council has led us um towards, and then those are great things, and those are things that we have to continue to do. But they also certainly affect um our make challenges for us as we move forward, and those are challenges that we welcome. So given all those things, we have focused primarily on the base budget, um which is essentially the numbers that we have this year, looking closely at those and where obligations are for next year and being as tied as we can with that with that growth. We want to continue council's initiative. Certainly, we want to maintain the same levels of service to our residents and visitors. We want to meet our compensation obligations to our employees. Uh, we want to make sure that we're competitive for recruiting new employees coming in, certainly with the council's approval of the police and fire agreements in the last year that ACM Holt and others worked so hard on. Uh, we want to continue those things and fulfill our obligations under those contracts for our police and fire personnel. And so we've done all those things in the base budget that we're developing now. We've also began the process with City Manager Ford asking the directors to reduce their budgets, to look for ways to cut back. Uh, we have a number of vacant positions that have been a long-time vacant positions, and we've actually eliminated some positions um in various parts of the city and vacant positions that have been there for a long time and unfilled. Other discretionary accounts, discretionary accounts are those accounts that aren't personnel-related and aren't tied to some of the contractual obligation that we already have. So we look for reductions there as well. Maintaining a level tax rate, and certainly that's going to be council's prerogative to change that if you'd like. But we're operating under that level tax rate structure in our base budget development now. We have looked at our fee schedule, and we've attempted to look at opportunities where perhaps we know our costs have gone up due to inflation and other things, and perhaps the fees need to be adjusted as well. Ultimately, that's a discussion and answer that you will provide, uh whether or not you think that's appropriate. But we have looked at those. Um, on our enterprise funds, water, sewer, solid waste, drainage, um we've looked at those rates, and and Bradley gave instruction early on to he wanted to keep those in total within a manageable amount of money each month for for our residents. So that's kind of where we've worked from and tried to bring that in at a reasonable number. And our target has been no more than ten dollars a month for all rates combined. And right now, we are um south of that. So uh will we talk anymore about all these things in the future? Probably the biggest thing from a a staff and and organizational standpoint, every year, all of our directors turn in, request to enhance services, provide better services in the future. Those requests, we we certainly receive those. We just don't have the team to evaluate them right now. We're also concerned about where revenues are. So our plan is as we move forward and build the team, um next year, perhaps mid-year, Bradley will be able to come back to you and say, hey, things are looking good. We've got some revenues. Here's some high priority items that council might want to consider for a mid-year adjustment. And ultimately, council will make that decision in mid-year of twenty-five. We hope to be able to put some money in the budget to allow for that to happen um next year. So let's talk calendar and timeline going forward. Um, you can keep this for your for your reference. We've attempted to try to put all these things on your calendars going forward so that you know um what's going to happen. June twenty-fifth, Budget Audit will be a big meeting. That follows your appointments and committees meeting. Um, lots of information to share there, lots of discussion to be had. Uh, you see the things we'll be talking about there, some of them I've mentioned today. And outside agencies will be one of our discussion points as well on the twenty-fifth and sharing both our philosophy in terms of where we think we are and the requests that we've gotten from some of our agencies and and getting your direction there. July second, we'll continue. You'll start seeing a budget item on all the work sessions going forward. We may have four one presentations those days, we may not. But it gives an opportunity for council to ask questions as we move forward. But July the second will be uh a really important day, right? That's the day that Bradley presents to you his recommended budget. And that will be our only meeting in July. And then on the twenty-fifth, as we've talked about previously, that's when the certified rolls come out. And then August, really early August is when we you'll start seeing business items on the agenda related to the budget and adoption of the budget. So on the sixth, we'll talk about the certified role, set date for the public hearing on the budget. And then that all the all the council meetings going forward from there, we'll have budget-related items. The highlighted one in yellow here, August twenty-seventh, is a special call meeting of the city council, so that will be a special meeting on the budget itself, public hearing on the budget and budget adoption. So August twenty-seventh is a big day in finalizing the process and then following that up with the September twenty-third public hearing on the tax rate. So um, those are, that's the calendar, and we'll be moving quickly through August. Bradley will present the budget, his recommended budget to you July the second. We'll have all of July and half of August to continue working with you in finalizing the budget, um getting your direction and changes that that you like to make um to his recommended budget, targeting that August twenty-seventh adoption. So that's our calendar going forward. A lot of work coming up on the twenty-fifth next next week, we from today. And we'll start in earnest then. So that and a acknowledgement to August Rodin, the thinker, right? So uh that's where we are, right? We're working through this, pondering every step along the way, and be glad to answer any questions you have.
I I don't think I have any questions, uh Paul. Anybody, anybody want to?
I appreciate going into the word world of Rodin and French art, you know, to just kind of help us with this more somber time.
Refinement idea that really.
It's refined.
The fires for art appreciation.
Appreciate the team that that you're putting that you've put together and that have been here for a while working on this and and some on a short kind of shorter timeframe than optimal. So looking forward to uh seeing what is presented to us soon and know that y'all do always the best work on our budget.
Yeah, also the same. Great team, and uh I've seen constructs where we where you work with reductions and and increase. So I do want to see the silver lining here where we see four percent increase in pro- property tax, one to two percent in sales, and uh we'll we'll work with it. I appreciate y'alls uh getting the the sharpening up the pencil on on some of this stuff. Any other questions? We are going to, that's the last item, uh City Manager Ford, and uh the next item, are there any requests? Are there, there's nothing, is there anything else, Bradley, you need to cover? Are there any requests for future uh agenda items? Uh, there are none, so we will now recess the work session and reconvene regular session for executive session as read into the record by the city secretary at five twenty-five P M.
Given that the city council will go into executive session in accordance with the following provisions. Attorney Briefing, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section five five one point oh seven one. Judy Allison versus City of Waco, Texas, Cause Number two thousand twenty-two dash three eight one eight dash five, pending the four fourteenth Judicial Court District Court. Personnel, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section five five one point oh seven four. City Manager Bradley Ford, Municipal Court Judge Robert Garcia, City Secretary Michelle Hicks, and City Attorney Jennifer Ritchie. Real Property, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section five five one point oh seven two. And Economic Development, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section five five one point oh eight seven. We are now in executive session.